Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started here. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:32 this Tuesday, April 15th, Tax Day. I hope you're all happy. At any rate, we're going to get started here. And we're going to start off with our invocation from Pastor William Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Larry Spicer.
Good evening, Councilmember Mayor. God bless you. Thank you for allowing me to stand before you in a moment of prayer. Will everyone join me, please? Father in heaven, I think that you bless this council. Father, that you bless this city staff. Father, I make a decree that you are Lord over Monrovia. Every strategy that the enemy has arranged towards this city is hindered and defeated. Every stronghold of the enemy has fallen and is no more. The deception that he tried to bound this city with is no more. It has fallen. Father, I think that you've dispatched angels throughout the city, this entire city, to perform your sound word. And Father, that it will be established here in Monrovia. Father, I thank you, Lord, that your statues in the city is for every corner, Father. I thank you, Lord, that the gospel is preached on every corner. I thank you that you are praised in this city. I thank you, Father, that your void will not return void, that it will accomplish everything that it was sent out to do and perform. And in your son's mighty name, we say amen.
Amen. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmembers Beldon, Jimenez, Spicer, Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kelly, and Mayor Chevlin. Yes, here. There is no report of closed session as we had none. And then we're moving on to presentations and proclamations. Unfortunately, under PR1, we don't have a Pet of the Month from Pasadena Humane. They were attending a conference and unable to send someone with a nice puppy to share with us. And so then we are moving to PR2, proclaiming April 26, 2025, as Earth Day and Arbor Day. And I've asked Councilmember Edward.
That's okay.
I just said.
Blacked out.
Yes, yes, sorry, Edward Beldon, excuse me. You know, good old Ed.
Councilmember Edward works fine. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Earth Day is celebrated on April 26 seconds, or April 22nd each year, serves to raise awareness and inspire actions towards environmental stewardship and sustainability. And whereas Arbor Day is observed on the last Friday in April to celebrate and encourage the planting of trees. And whereas the city of Monrovia will celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day by collaborating with the Monrovia Area Partnership on Saturday, April 26th, at the annual MAP Conference, providing an opportunity to engage with our community to teach stewardship and environmental awareness. And whereas Earth Day serves as an annual reminder to Monrovia's of our collective responsibility to promote environmental awareness and take actionable steps towards mitigating the effects of climate change in our daily lives. And whereas Monrovia is dedicated to creating programs that engage residents, schools, and local youth that foster a sustainable environment, promote responsible stewardship, and encourage the harmonious coexistence of people, animals, and nature in our foothill community. Whereas the city of Monrovia is deeply committed to preserving and protecting our public lands, particularly the Canyon Park and the Hillside Golem's Preserve, which serve as a critical ecological asset for our community. And whereas Arbor Day reminds us of the vital role trees play in creating a healthier environment by providing natural shade, improving air quality, reducing noise pollution, and supporting wildlife habitat. And whereas the city of Monrovia is committed to instill best practices to ensure the health of our urban forests by planting and preserving native trees throughout our community. And whereas Monrovia proudly holds the designation of the Tree City USA year after year as a testament to the environmental stewardship and urban greening. And now, therefore, I, Becky Chevlin, Mayor of the city of Monrovia, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 26th, 2025, as Earth Day and Arbor Day in Monrovia, and encourage all residents to take part in activities to help preserve our environment and enhance our urban forest.
Thank you, Edward, Mr. Beldon. And we have tonight, we've got with us Karen Suarez, representing the California Native Plant Society, and I think a few other friends with her that she would like to come in. We'll bring down the proclamation for you and we can take a picture. But share any news you'd like to share with us.
Thank you very much. A beautiful proclamation, Edward. Thank you. I'm joined here by our president of our chapter, Gabby McLean, of the California Native Plant Society, the San Gabriel Mountains Chapter. Her husband, former President Cliff McLean, and former President Helena Bowman. And we thank Monrovia, the city of Monrovia, for this Arbor Day and Earth Day proclamation on this month, Earth Day. And this is also Native Plant Month. So the Native Plant Society has a really great relationship with the city of Monrovia. For the third year now, we're going to be hosting our Native Plant Sale on November 8th at the Historical Museum on the patio at 742 East Lemon Avenue. And our regular meetings were held at the Eaton Canyon Nature Center that unfortunately burned down in the Eaton Fire. So please join us for our meetings that are conveniently now in Monrovia or nearby. Check the website for updates on that. But take advantage of them while they're conveniently here at the Library Community Room. The fourth Thursdays of the month, this next meeting is Thursday, the April 24th, and the program is really one not to miss with former President Rebecca Latta. She is from Altadena Green, and she's going to be talking about efforts to protect the native trees that were damaged by the Eaton Fire. So it's going to be a really great program. You can visit our website at CNPS-SGM.org. And Earth Day every day, Arbor Day every day, Native Plant every month. We hope to see you also at the Monrovia Area Partnership map, where the city will be giving away 150 native trees to first serve. So we all collectively really appreciate Monrovia's vision of partnering up and understanding native plants and why native plants, native trees. Native plants are different than just regular so-called drought tolerant plants that are, you'll see a lot of them as cactus and succulents in people's yards. And those cuttings cannot go into the green can. 99.999% of California native plants can go into the green recycle can. Just the succulents and cactus cannot go into the green can. They have to go in the black can. So help preserve our landfill and plant California native plants and help our species from going extinct because that, native plants are the nursery for our species. You might have any flower on the planet that will attract a hummingbird or a bee, and those are the adults. But you won't have next year's babies without California native plants. So plant California natives. And so with that, thank you very much.
Well, we'll come down and take a picture and give you your proclamation.
And President Gabby McLean brought some stuff that she would like to give to City Manager Dylan Peake to share with you. And if you can take home and read it, that would be great.
Yeah, I also like to thank you on behalf of our chapter in the society. And I'm really, really impressed with Monrovia and the opportunities you provide, not only to us with having our meetings here and the plant sale here, but your parks and your preserve to preserve the Brownton's Milk Vetch. It's amazing. I haven't seen another city do so much for their community, provide that much opportunity. So congratulations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our pleasure. Okay, now, a little birdie told me it was somebody's birthday. And it's Ed, it's Big Ed. It's Big Ed's birthday. Edward Beldon. So let's sing a happy birthday to Edward on the count of three. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Cha cha cha. Happy birthday, dear Edward. Happy birthday to you and many more. If maybe you could leave them on the table back there or even out there and people can take them as they leave. I brought jelly beans and chocolate eggs and stuff after dinner. Friday, but obviously we'd miss it. So if there's still, they'll put them out in the lobby and so you can grab one as you go out. Moving on then to our Student Government Representative Report. We have our liaison Jasmine Rodriguez. Jasmine.
Hello. I'm so sorry, my computer is facing internet problems. Okay, good evening, Mayor Chevlin, members of the council and members of the community. To start off, next upcoming Saturday, April 26th, is officially our prom. ASB Renaissance have been working really hard to make sure all our materials are ready so our event goes by smoothly. Our theme is still Night at Gatsby. As we've entered the last couple of months of the year, we have officially started our Sign on the Line event, where seniors can sign up to publicly announce during lunch in the middle of the quad their college of choice that they decided to sign to, where parents are invited to come and cheer on their child as well as the rest of the student body. Lastly, we are coming to the tail end of our spring sports season, and every sport has done amazing, and ASB has provided amazing posters for all sports. Thank you.
Thank you. And are you in the countdown yet for graduation?
I am about a month and a half out.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for the report. Moving on then, I don't believe we have any changes to our order of business. And so we'll move on to our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion unless there is something that someone needs to pull. Do we have a motion to approve item CC1 through CC9?
So move. Madam Mayor.
We're going to do a roll call vote. You can just do the roll call vote. Do we have a second, though? Second. We have a motion and a second. And can we please have a roll call vote? Councilmembers Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes, with the exception of CC8, I am on the Board of the San Gabriel Valley Volunteer Center.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes, with the exception of CC8.
Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kelly. Yes. And Mayor Chevlin. Yes, thank you very much. That passes our consent calendar. And we're moving on to public input. And this is the time we thank you very much for coming and providing, we encourage public input. And we do ask you, we do have some cards, correct? The city clerk will ask you, will call you up. And please just remember to keep within a three-minute timeframe. And we encourage you to come forward and share your input on items not on the agenda. So there is opportunity. If you want to speak on an agenda item, you're more than welcome to give us a card for that as well. Beginning with Donna Baker. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening, Mayor Chevlin, councilmembers, Mr. Feek, Mr. Steele. I am Donna Baker. I am the president of the Monrovia Chamber of Commerce, and I am here tonight to invite you all to come to several events that we have coming up this month. So this Thursday at 8:30 a.m., we are hosting a coffee social. That's an opportunity to network with local business people. It's at my office at John Hart Real Estate at 517 South Myrtle Avenue. Come and get some coffee and some donuts and meet some people. So that's the first one. And then next week, on April 23rd at 4 o'clock, we are having a ribbon cutting for a new Thai restaurant here at 939 West Huntington Drive called Kin Kao Thai Eatery. So we will have that ribbon cutting, and they'll be serving some food, tasty stuff. So please make sure you attend that. And then on Monday, the 28th, we are having our first mixer of the year, and that will be at Moda over at Monrovia Station on their rooftop. And that will be from 5:30 to 7:30, and we'll have refreshments there. And it's also a great opportunity for the local business people to network with one another. And you're all invited to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dr. Anthony Fellow and Catherine Vasquez.
What a night to be here. Ed's birthday, and I got to spend time with Pastor Kelly and the Native Society. And I hope everybody supports their November 8th event, and I promise them I will help them.
And you have a very nice native plant arrangement in the front of your building as well.
Yes, very nice. And we have the bear all set, so we're doing well. I just want to say, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Spicer and Councilman Beldon for being on my Colorado River trip this past week ago. And they asked some very intelligent questions, so I was very happy. And I hope you enjoyed it. I enjoyed having you. I'm just here tonight to say, please come to our May 3rd Water Fest, Annual Water Fest at San Anita Park. Usually it's 3,000 to 5,000 people. You all should be there, too. It's the 3rd, not the 8th, okay? And so please come out. And there's lots of things, especially for young people. We'd like to get more young people out. And Supervisor Barker will be there also this year.
And at San Anita Park?
At 10 o'clock till 2 p.m. And I want to introduce you to Kat, if some of you don't know. She's part of our staff. And Councilman Beldon wanted us to share some of the activities of Upper District, so she'll do that right there.
Thank you, Director Fellow. Okay, all right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Catherine Vasquez, and I'm the Government and Community Affairs Representative with the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. We're also known as Upper Water. And I'm here today to provide you a brief overview of Upper Water's programs and resources we offer to your residents and businesses. So first, I'll just give you a little quick background of who we are. Upper Water is a regional water wholesaler for 18 cities and 26 retailers across the San Gabriel Valley. Our primary responsibility is to provide imported water to the region while promoting sustainable solutions that help our communities use water efficiently. We operate as a member agency of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California and are governed by a five-member elected board of directors. Our board director, Dr. Anthony Fellow, proudly represents the city of Monrovia and along with other neighboring cities. So now I'd like to talk about the resources we have available for your community. We offer a variety of free in-person and virtual landscaping workshops where residents can learn about how to convert the turf into water-wise gardens to firescaping their homes. We recently partnered with the city of Monrovia's Community Services and Public Works Department to host a free firescaping workshop for your residents. This will be at the Library Community Room on Thursday, June 12th at 6 p.m. We offer rebates for residents and businesses looking to replace grass with drought tolerant landscaping or upgrade outdated indoor or outdoor water devices with more efficient models. We also recently launched our plant voucher program, which provides residents with $250 to purchase California native or drought tolerant plants, and this can be found on our website. Upper Water is committed to educating youth about water conservation and developing programs that increase students' water knowledge through creative, hands-on activities and science-based curriculum. Our efforts include water education grants, the watershed restoration program with the U.S. Forest Service, and classroom presentations from the Discovery Cube for 4th through 7th grade students. We also provide transportation grants to cover the cost of bus travel and entrance to the Discovery Cube. And lastly, once again, we want to invite you all to Water Fest. That's happening right next door to us, May 3rd, which is Saturday, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And that is all we have. And then I do bring, I brought more resources for you all, so.
You can just give them to Alice or to Lauren. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ian Motkin.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. Trying to follow up on the last meeting. Let me say one quick thing. The woman who spoke, I don't know her name, who talked about the trash is a real issue. Remember, she said that we, one person said that they favored filtered water over the bottled water. I'm sorry, I disagree. Any bottled water will send you the contents. I've been drinking Crystal Geyser here in California. That's the only water I will drink. I don't even like Arrowhead. To me, it has a funny taste. So I'm just stating my disagreement. Now on to the other business, which you know I'm here about, which is the 105 property. The property that has basically been infringing on every resident's mental and physical health. Right now, we have no hot water. And the manager, Linda Gibson, who the, ABOD representative claims is the best manager they have, that's because she's saving them all kinds of money by not making the property safe. Okay, I've been cracking down. I have three lawyers, and I'm meeting with the third lawyer pretty soon because I was, I had to pay myself for a follow-up mold report. Okay, after everybody here, including Sergio, was there, when I requested the code enforcement people to come and inspect, they walked into my apartment, and then eventually ABOD did have, you know, someone come and do some kind of remediation, which I thought was inadequate. Because when I came back after they put me up in one of those places on Fifth Avenue, I'm sure I could figure out which one, the cheap ones, where they have the kitchen in there. And the point is that.
Betsy, Betsy, please.
Okay, whatever it is, we can figure it out. The point is that the remediation was inadequate. I have been ill, as I have spoken many times. I've been ill since the minute I stepped foot in that building. When I stepped foot in the building, I also told Linda Gibson, the manager, that I have many allergies. I'm allergic to dust, allergic to dust mites. The point is, she claims that she was going to order one of those special filters. She never did. So literally, I've been sick every day. Even though, since I left the apartment to go into the hotel, you know what I mean, and they claimed they did remediation, which I'm sure they did not do adequately. By the way, I had to pay myself. The man who did the initial mold report, I paid him personally $500. He was willing to do it only because I paid personally. Because he said ABOD owes them more than $27,000, and he does not want to work with them again because of it. This is unacceptable. We need to follow up with organizations like ABOD. If we're going to attract, right, affordable housing here, we have to have a way to fully vet them and to fully ensure that they are keeping the property safe. They are not keeping our property safe. And I have said things at other times to show how so. And Sergio, you've been there. I know that you've seen those steps. Remember the, basically illegal, there's no real fire exit. Am I getting to the deadline here?
You're close.
Close, okay. So minutes away. I want to emphasize, I would like Sergio and the others, code enforcement team, to review because I'm meeting with my lawyer. His name is Koch. He's specifically for the mold, okay? So I'm just letting you know, I was hoping maybe, if you want to come out, you don't, doesn't matter, I have pictures.
Mr. Motkin, address the whole council, please.
I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to just.
That's okay.
Larry, you've been an incredible help. Larry's been my right-hand man.
Mr. Motkin, I think we.
You've gotten the picture.
We've got the picture, and so.
I thank you.
Mr. Feek has also heard as well, and so we can.
Mr. Feek, and I had a very long conversation. In fact, he walked me out the door. So I love Mr. Feek.
Okay, we love him, too.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next is Karen DeCleu. Karen, are you here? Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor Chevlin, City Councilmembers, Mr. Feek. As you know, I'm Karen DeCleu. My husband and I are raising our three kids here in Monrovia. And Monrovia is our home. I'm here tonight because I'm heavily invested in seeing Monrovia's community thrive, and I want to speak in support of bringing back aquatics programming to the city through a partnership with the school district. My youngest is going to graduate from MHS in 11 years. But after that. My youngest is going to graduate from MHS in 11 years, but after that, I know I'm still going to care about our schools. Of course, I want MUSD to thrive while my kids are there, but also I just want Monrovia's schools to be attractive to our, attractive symbols of our all-American city. I want the schools to be strong enough to make my kids want to move back one day and raise their kids here. I want, like, I want it, I want, honestly, oh, I wouldn't have bought a home in Monrovia, actually, if it weren't for the dual immersion program at Monrovia Schools. It was the schools that brought me back home. I moved back here intentionally for our schools and a lot of our neighbors do that. Strong schools make our whole community better. They help our property values, they attract great new neighbors, and they make Monrovia a place that people move to on purpose. I think all of us, whether we have kids in the district or not, want to feel proud of the schools in our community. The city and the school district are so tightly connected, we should be working together constantly. Right now, with aquatics, we have the perfect opportunity to do that. We have the cities and the school district that both need a pool. We have a joint use model from the past that we can improve upon. And there is a lot of community support from this. I know people use this phrase a lot, but it seems like an easy win. Tonight, I just want to ask you all, please keep reaching out, keep the conversation going. I don't know, I, there may, I'm sure there are obstacles that I don't know about, but please keep trying to overcome them. I mean, the school district, they have to fix this pool situation, right? They have, like, they can't, they can't not, right? They're going to do something about it. And my hope is that the city can get in on this project to help them, which helps us, but also just to help us because we also need the same thing. We need a functioning pool. I've mentioned in the past meetings, the benefits that aquatic programming can bring to a community. And I want to see our, a new aquatic center become a jewel for our schools and our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Next is Myra King.
Good evening. Hi. Hi, I'm Myra. Good evening, City Council Members. I just relocated to Monrovia with my son. His name's Kai. Yeah, and I absolutely adore here. My sister had the fondest memories here. She went to Monrovia High. And, yeah, she has the fondest memories as a kid and now as an adult, I get to raise my son in this beautiful city as she herself once called home. Full of great resources and even better community. A little about my son, he's an extraordinary kid. He's full of energy, he's very charismatic, he's very curious, he's just a very sweet kid and absolutely loves water, but he's still getting comfortable being in a pool. But it takes time, patience, and a reliable facility. We can all agree that a frightened child who can't swim near any body of water is a terrifying thought. There's, there is an opportunity right now to work with the school district and update the high school pool for shared use. I'm here tonight to ask for you to do that. There are a lot of programs you could offer at the pool that would be good for my family and other families like mine. So please remember that for every student who wants a pool to swim in, there's even more, there's even more Monrovia's residents who want to call that, do that as well. This should be a city priority first. Everyone should have the opportunity to learn and make everlasting memories together. And with these renovations, we, we as a unit can achieve that. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Myra.
Next is Heather Castle. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Council Members. Yes, I'm going to talk about the pool. Okay, I'm just going to keep you going. I know there are a lot of other concerns in our city regardless of what we're talking about tonight. There's a lot of things happening and the pool kind of seems like low stakes. But again, an easy win and I just want to reiterate why that might be the case here. I got a text a couple weeks ago from a high school student at Monrovia High School asking for donations for the pool. And that was really powerful for me. My, I have an eight-year-old who's really hoping to get onto the swim team at the Y and she, even tonight, she's not here, she needs to be in bed, but she was like, gosh, I really hope that I'm going to be able to be on a swim team, to do water polo in, in high school. And so thinking about our community and thinking about the hemorrhaging of students in our community and how that's impacting our school district right now, not only is making cuts something that has to happen in our school district, but investment really needs to happen in our school district. And, and I'm hoping that along the lines of what Karen was saying, really urging the city to partner with our school district to make sure that we are not only taking things away in order to create a financially viable school district, but we're also investing in our community, investing in our kids in a long-term way so that, again, so that our kids can come back and feel proud, want to raise their kids here. We're thinking about the full life cycle of a citizen and I just really urge you to think about a pool. I mean, it feels like a symbol of something that we really desperately need at the local level. Things to, to gather around, a place to gather with our community, a place to be with our kids, a place to engage with one another, to meet our neighbors, to be good to our neighbors. I know a pool seems like it might not be the thing, but I really do believe that not only is it a place where kids can learn, but older kids can then also participate in caring for the young and the elderly. Okay, I'm going to put myself in this situation because I do, I'm not in the elderly range, but I, I am approaching. I, I am not running anymore. I am taking laps at the Y these days. That is, swimming is, you know, the thing that I need in order to feel alive. This is a full community endeavor and so I just really urge you to think about how to strategically partner with our school district and to take that, to take that step to, to, to really support the full life cycle of a citizen in Monrovia. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I have no more speaker cards. Wait, Karen?
Hi, sorry, I didn't turn in the card. And Karen Suarez, resident of Monrovia. Hello, Mayor and Council again and our awesome ma, City Manager, Dylan Feig, thank you. I wanted to talk about our upcoming Monrovia Garden Club meeting, which disappeared on my, and actually for the May meeting and would like to invite all of the council and Mayor Chevlin and City Manager and any dignitary, every resident is welcome to come to our garden award meeting. And our meetings are the fourth Tuesday of the month and so we are at 101 East Foothill Boulevard in the Presbyterian Church downstairs at the Fellowship Hall. And so the 10 gardens have been selected. We have amazing judges and I just think it's a great opportunity for everybody to come and see these yards that we've highlighted. They have great water-saving features, rain-catching barrels and swales and California native plants in most of them, but they, and small, large, but a really great array of yards that we're seeing more and more around the community. So I hope that everybody can come and if not, you can catch the slideshow that will be playing out on KJIM. Say hi to Garrett LaPorte from KJIM. Thank you, KJIM. So hopefully, we can see you at our garden club meetings and check out our really awesome winning yards this year. So thank you for the partnership with the city of Monrovia. It's been, it's been great and really happy with the yards and the people who really take pride in Monrovia and making these gardens just so beautiful and taking pride in, in this city. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments? Anyone that would like to provide public comment on items not on the agenda? Not seen anywhere. I'm going to close that portion of our meeting and then we are moving on then to our reports of City Manager and Staff, RCM1, City Council Directives Update, and Mr. Feek.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not too many directives updates on the list that's published as part of your packet. I do want to highlight to the public that the City Council held a retreat last week. We're going to be, I'm going to be providing an updated list of goals and objectives for this upcoming quarter. A lot of exciting projects to look forward to, including an additional item later tonight where we'll start work on the 222 East Cypress. I'll provide a report on that later in the AR item. The only additional item I'd like to bring to your attention is earlier, do you have that letter, that'll be 52? Earlier today, well, actually yesterday, I received, both myself and Mayor Chevlin were copied on an email from the Gabrielle Nio Band of Mission Indians. The, the letter came requesting our support, our support of their cause, which is to oppose amendments that are referred to in AB 52. They refer to as the threat to non-federally recognized tribal participation. Essentially, there's a proposal in the state legislature that would define native tribal participation under SEQA as tribes recognized by the federal government. California has its own process for tribal recognition and the concern is that tribes that are not defined federally could miss out on opportunities to participate in environmental, meaningful environmental reviews of projects under SEQA. So we're going to review this request. It seems appropriate to review and weigh in. It is a fairly quick turnaround that they've requested our support within the next week or two. So if council is okay, I'll review with the help of the city attorney and we'll consider providing a letter in, in support of their cause, which would be to oppose some proposed amendments to AB 52 if permissible by the council. That's my update this evening.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Feek? Okay, then. We are moving on then to C, RCM2, Citywide Lighting Landscape and Parks Maintenance Assessment Districts Rate Options. And we have Ray Bowman, Deputy Administrative Services Director, to, here to give us the report.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor Chevlin. Good evening, Mayor Chevlin and members of City Council. Tonight's report will be a brief follow-up to the Assessment District Study Session held with council two weeks ago on April 1st. During that study session, council directed staff to provide additional options for a five-year rate implementation for the proposed new citywide assessment district. So this evening, we will be presenting additional options for a five-year rate implementation for your consideration. We're also looking to obtain council's input and guidance and answer any questions you might have. So this slide was presented at the previous study session, but we wanted to show it again this evening as context for the proposed new assessment district. The city currently has two districts, the parks and the lighting and landscape maintenance districts. And this slide provides a simple five-year financial overview of the costs of those two districts combined. As you can see from this chart, the deficit has been growing over time. And in short, the assessments have not kept pace with increasing costs and the projected deficit for 2425 is 1.14 million. I wanted to include this slide again to illustrate the costs versus the assessment revenues that the city receives. It provides a visual that shows that the gap between costs and revenues has been growing over time. So given the annual deficit, staff worked extensively with NBS to design and propose a solution. And that solution is a combined assessment district that covers the cost of maintaining the city's lighting, trees, and landscaping and parks. And the rates were designed to comply with state law and to be least impactful to the community. Study sessions were held on February 18 and April 1st. And given the feedback and guidance from the April 1st study session, staff developed additional options for your consideration this evening. Option one is to implement rates at 60% in year one with 10% increases every year for the next four years. This is the option we reviewed on April 1st. Option two is new and this option proposes to implement rates at 50% in year one with 12.5% increases every year for the next four years. And then we have option three, which is also new and it proposes to implement rates at 55% in year one with 11.25% increases every year for the next four years. I did want to note that for any of these options, the assessments collected during year one will still be more than the assessments that the city is currently collecting with the existing districts. And with any of these options, CPI will be incorporated beginning in year one to keep up with cost increases each year. In previous study sessions, we've looked at potential rate increases for a variety of land use types, but this evening, we'd like to focus on our residential less than five units as this classification accounts for approximately 80% of the parcels in the city. There are approximately 8,700 parcels within this category, which includes single-family residential and dwellings consisting of less than five units, such as duplexes and triplexes. So let's start with option one. And again, this is the option we looked at during our last study session. Option one is the 60% implementation in year one with 10% increases each year for the next four years. And for context, the figures in the blue box here are the potential increases if the rates were implemented immediately. But given option one's phased-in approach, year one increases will range from $61 right here to $240, with additional increases between $10 and $40 each year thereafter for the next four years.
Right, just so I clarify, so those amounts are the total assessment or that's in addition to what they already pay now?
These amounts, so year one will be $61 to $120 and then incremental increases.
And that, and that includes the entire assessment?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Oh, okay, so that is the whole, what they're currently paying plus what the new addition will be?
So the rates in this slide show what the rates will be phased in in year one and then in the next four years thereafter, the additional amounts building off of year one.
But what we were talking about though is that on that first year, that is the entire assessment, that they would be billed in year one?
Yeah.
So current, currently, the assessment between the two, the two different assessments we have are approximately $75 per assessment. But if it's a duplex or a triplex, there would be two or three of those. So these just represent the increases above what's currently assessed.
So sorry, it's the increases.
Oh, okay. So it'd be 75 plus the 61 to?
Correct. Yes. So sorry, should have been clearer. Perfect. Now let's take a look at option two. So option two is a 50% rate implementation in year one with 12.5% increases each year for the next four years. Given this option, year one increases will range from $51 to $200, with additional increases between $12 and $50 each year thereafter for the next four years. And lastly, let's take a look at option three. And option three is a 55% rate implementation in year one with 11.25% increases each year for the next four years. Given this option, year one increases will range from $55 to $220, with additional increases ranging from $11 to $45 each year thereafter for the next four years. At the last study session, council asked staff to provide an example of a current rate in the existing assessment districts and the corresponding new rate for the proposed citywide assessment district. And this slide here illustrates all three options using the most common residential, residential rate that is currently being assessed. So of the 8,700 parcels that comprise the residential less than five, approximately 6,200 are currently being assessed $71.47. If the new district, if the new citywide combined assessment district is approved, the new median rate is estimated to be $260.70. The median being the middle of the rates or, in other words, the $260.70 is the midpoint of the rates. The lowest rate is estimated at $174.53 and the highest at $411.59. I did also want to note, as we discussed at the previous study session, the new assessment rate calculation is based on special benefits. So even though there are many parcels that are currently being assessed at $71.47 currently, their new rates are more varied due to the updated methodology of the special benefit calculation. As you can see, using this median rate as an example, option two would result in the lowest year one impact. And we wanted to include this information to demonstrate specific examples on what rates might look like, given the different options for a five-year rate implementation. In conclusion, tonight's presentation focused on three different options for a five-year approach. And the next steps would be to gather your input regarding these options and depending on your feedback, possibly look at options for outreach and potential timelines for the Prop 218 process. And that concludes my report. Thank you so much for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ray. Questions? Comments?
So the, the least painful alternative, at least initially, would be the 50% increase in year one?
Yes, option two.
Okay.
In year one. At least for year one. Yes, option two, in year one. At least for year one.
Just a couple of quick comments. Me, uh, thank you for looking at all the different options, and, and I think honestly, this last slide is really helpful to get a perspective of what, uh, we're asking residents to consider here. Um, did, did we think about as well, just even breaking it up even more, and like, I know we want to try to fill a gap as soon as possible, but we've been trying, like, you know, almost like 20% for every five years to keep us there, too, is there a reason we're trying to push so hard to get it that, so much more in that first year?
Yeah. Um, so, the first year needs to be at least as much as we're collecting now, uh, and the 50% gets us just about there. So, um, the, the thought process really is to make sure that we're not going to go backwards and kind of start moving forwards. Um, but in terms of rate implementation, we do have options depending on council's feedback, so...
It just seems like the longer we prolong it, the deeper in debt, so to speak.
We still have to subsidize it.
Yeah. So, and when you look at the option one, you know, even though it's 60% off the top, at the beginning, it's only 10% over the next four years.
That is correct.
You know? It's a lot better than the, you know, the 12, what is it, 12.5%?
If you look, just look at the, the numbers that are collected. If you look at option two, then that one looks like it's below, except in year five. I think year five, all of them are the same.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, year two is lower than option one and lower than option three.
I can ask a question. Say, for example, we did, uh, option one. What is the timeframe that, uh, our residents would be, would need to make this jump as it relates to the fees?
Uh, that's a great question. So, there's a few procedural steps we'd have to do for the new citywide assessment district to take place. Of course, it still does have to go out to a Prop 218 vote, so we still have to do some outreach, education, um, and residents will cast their ballots on a Prop 218 vote. The timeline that we're looking at currently is fiscal year '26, '27, and if we were to reach that goal, uh, our residents would see it on their October 2026 tax bill.
Okay. So, when would we, when would the earliest time you'd want to release that ballot?
So, um, there's a few different steps that we'll have to do, given your feedback tonight, of course. So, um, the next steps for us would be to take your feedback and guidance tonight, uh, kind of formulate and put together our outreach plans or education materials. Um, and then we'd have to also work and circle back with NBS to update the, uh, tax rolls, to make sure that the late, they're the latest, greatest secured roll data from the county. Um, so, in terms of kind of the outreach and, um, for the, the ballot for our residents, we're thinking outreach will be sometime spring next year, and the ballots will be put out to vote between April and May.
And these, this, the example, um, example of residential, that is, the number, or the greatest number of, of parcels, and it's residential, five or less...
Correct.
Units?
Yes, yes.
And that's an average of those, or does each one of those parcels, five or less, whether they have five or two or three or whatever, it, those are all the same, correct? Or do they have, do they get a, some type of a variance because of a benefit?
Yes, so there's a variance because of the way the benefit is calculated, correct?
So, from us, you would like to have a final decision by?
So, if I could maybe just make a couple, um, I'm going to call it subjective comments from my perspective. I do think it's possible that we could, um, do our public outreach and education and promotion of why this is important to the public, um, this year, and perhaps even hold the, the ballot votes this year. I think part of the balancing act is, is balancing this with all of the other workload items that we have, not just in administrative services, but citywide. Um, I think my, my preference, uh, will be once the city council provides direction on, I think we've, you've already given us tremendous direction up until this point, and I think this is the last piece. From here, what we'll do is we'll start preparing all of our outreach and marketing materials. We'll make sure the website's up, updated. We want to make sure that we're sharing with every community member, community group, why this is being proposed and requested, so that they're informed before they cast their ballots. Uh, but the timing of when it happens, I, I don't think we want to, um, I don't think we want to rush it, but I do think we want to get the information out there while it's fresh. They've been able to study it. I think the longer it sits out there, uh, it just becomes harder for us to keep it as a priority in front. So, um, my, my hope is that we'll see it go, uh, out for their ballots to be cast as soon as possible.
And can I ask, this one has, if I'm reading this, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm running the wrong one. Hmm. What is the recommendation on this one?
Um, it's open for your feedback.
Okay, then I was looking at the, the wrong thing. I'm sorry. Um...
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I was getting back to your, this slide five, or the, the one that kind of gives us the full update on the amounts. Um, I think you, maybe I just didn't understand it. You, you mentioned that you went for like the 50% because that would make sure we take in as much as we're currently taking in?
Correct, with the two existing districts.
But on our, on, on this one, for the residential example, it's almost double what they're currently assessed at. So, wouldn't that, I would assume we're doubling what we're bringing in, but we're not. So, does that mean that other parcels are having a huge reduction, and thus residential is having a huge increase?
There, there are some parcels with decreases, um, and that's a, that's a great question. Um, that's a great question. But, um, this is, because of the way the special benefits are calculated, it really does kind of restructure the methodology for each land use category. So, um, i- in addition to that, of course, there's also the general benefit recalculation that happened. So, the existing districts have a separate general benefit calc that is now also kind of going to get reestablished with this new assessment district. So, um, the 50% of the, the 50% threshold that we have really is taking into consideration the general benefit that we have to pay, in addition to the cost increases that we anticipate for the next few years.
Since you were asking us for feedback, then, were you asking for or anticipating a motion, or this is just direction?
Just direction tonight. I'm kind of weighing up the options that we have.
Well, if I was going to pick one of these three, I'll just put it out there, I'd pick option two, but that doesn't, I'm not set in stone on that one.
Of the three, that would be my, my opinion here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sergio?
Yes, like I said, that seems to be the less painful, at least initially. Um, I know, I, I would be, it, it's...
I don't think there's a...
It's distasteful. There's no, there's no, nothing good about it. You're...
There's no way to get around it.
We have been kicking this can down the road for a long time.
But this report is very good.
Yeah, the report's good, and it has enough time as well.
So, I think you're hearing the consensus. Larry, you're, you're option two as well?
Yes.
So, you have all, all of us saying option two?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, then, we will look forward to seeing how the outreach comes along. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on then to, uh, reports of city council members and subcommittees. Dr. Kelly, how about you first?
I had a feeling. I just was feeling that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a couple of things that I want to highlight tonight. Um, there were some wonderful, um, events that have happened, um, over this past weekend and a week through Motab. The first thing that I want to report on is the, this past Saturday was the bunny photos, and I just really appreciated that. Got an opportunity to go to the park. It was hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of families there, smiling. It was excellently executed, wonderful, um, opportunities for families to come together. There were smiles, and just one of the things that makes Monrovia so great, and I really loved it. The, the pictures were free, just something to offer to the community, and, um, just a couple of crying babies, but other than that...
I see Tina's over there in the corner. Do we know how many pictures were taken?
Oh.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah. There were a lot. Let me tell you, there were, uh, I'm trying to see, there were hundreds of families. I, I was trying to see if there was a number there, but there were hundreds of families I saw personally. So, I mean, and, and, and they all stayed in line. So, I would imagine over 200, I would imagine, uh, pictures that were taken. And, um, so that was excellently done. So, so just good job to the staff. Um, another uh, great, uh, well-attended event, uh, was the Wine Walk, and I have some numbers here that I'd like to share with you. Um, the Wine Walk, we had over 650 participants this year. 650. Did you catch that? Okay. We generated a net proceed of $27,000.
Wow.
Yes, it was a wonderful, um, event, and, and what was so great about that is that the merchants, um, there were, they were, had increased in businesses, uh, some of the merchants, and they just really went out of their way, uh, to provide an atmosphere for community. So, that's another opportunity for Monrovia to come together and have a, a wonderful time in community. Excellently done. Uh, the library board, uh, library want to announce April the 25th from 5:30, 7:30, the library will be hosting a game night for adults. So, not for the kiddos. You can, you can leave the kids with babysitters. It's for the adults. This free event will include a huge selection of board games, puzzles, as well as Nintendo Switch, for those of you who are still playing Nintendo. Come play Super Smash Brothers or Mario Kart and work on team puzzles as you wait your turn at the controls. These, again, this is for adults. On Wednesday, May 7, at 6:00 PM, the library will be hosting a thank you dinner for all veterans. While guests enjoy dinner, our amazing library team will share about the programs and resources available to veterans here in the city of Monrovia. So, please share and invite any veterans that you know. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll move on to Mr. Spicer.
Okay. All right, Mayor, I'll just give a quick update on, uh, community services. This Saturday, from 10 to 1:00 PM, join us at, uh, Recreation Park for the annual spring egg hunt. Um, there will be all types of activities for the whole family to enjoy, including ten egg hunts with over 30,000 eggs, and of course, photos with the bunny. Um, like, um, Dr. Fellows was saying, I was able to go on the water tour, and one of the reason why I wanted to, um, go on this particular tour again was because of the, um, information that we received from Hayday Farms. Um, Hayday Farm embraces the, the regenerative farming practices. It where it enhances the, um, soil health, and you, you're able to conserve resources and, um, promote sustainable agriculture. Um, regenerative, um, focuses on restoring the natural balance of the ecosystem by improving the soil quality, increasing the biodiversity, and reducing reliance on synthetic inputs like fertilizers and pesticides. But also, some of the key aspects of their, um, program includes, um, soil enre- enrichment, carbon sequesterant, sequesterant, water conservation, and biodiversity. And, um, I, overall, I thought it was a really good, um, um, tour. The food was great. The prime rib was outstanding. The steaks was good.
I'm getting hungry, Larry, please.
It was a really good educational tour. Um, I think this is, uh, working with the Upper Water District should be something that the school district should be tied into with the kids. You know, whether it's going down and checking out the pure water, um, purification plant.
Learning that Kawaga muscles.
Yeah, well, the Kawaga muscle's going to be there, but sooner or later, they'll come up with something to, um, combat that. But anyway, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Jimenez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Monrovia has a strong historic identity, and on Sunday, May 4, 2025, that strong historic identity, identity is going to be on display for everybody to see. It's going to be the 41st Annual Historic Homes Tour. For 41 years, MoPeg, uh, Monrovia Historical Preservation Group, has been doing historical home tours right here in Monrovia. And, um, the tickets are available at Charlie's House at 430 South Myrtle. They're $25 pre-sale. The styles that are going to be featured are an eclectic mix of, uh, traditional styles and some that, um, are a little bit of a, of a mix of two or more styles. But this is an opportunity to enjoy yourself, bring your family, bring your friends from the outside. If they want to know more about Monrovia's beautiful historic homes, this is the perfect opportunity. Come out and support Monrovia's Historic Preservation Group. Support MoPeg. And I want to also, Madam Mayor, talk a little bit about the Easter egg hunt. Um, it's not just, you go out there, you see families with kids, but it's not just the families and kids that we're supporting when we have events in downtown Monrovia. It is really the community, uh, because it brings shoppers. And I want to thank the community services, along with Motab, for really partnership, partnering. It's the partnership, and it's bringing these people to downtown Monrovia that they might not otherwise come on a Saturday morning. It was a huge line, and the people were, some of them had had breakfast before, and some were going to eat afterwards, but it brings life to Monrovia's Old Town. So, thank you, community services. Thank you to Motab for bringing, uh, life to this, the early, in the morning. I think they started at 10. They, they stopped at 1, but I have a feeling they probably went beyond that, because the line was huge when I got there. Um, so, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's it.
All right. And the birthday boy, Edward Bellin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this past Saturday, there was a great event at, at Library Park. As I mentioned, it was a wonderful weekend in Old Town. Uh, at the same time, Food Ed hosted a few events at, uh, some of our local elementary schools. I think Madam Mayor may have attended a couple as well. Um, I had a chance to go and join them at Monroe, uh, a place I spent a lot of time when I was a young kid there. Um, and, uh, they've just done a great transformation to some of the garden spaces and outdoor spaces, and a lot of students, families, uh, just joining and participating in those, as well as at Brad Oaks, too. Um, so, great things going on, and I think they're going to be doing a lot more, as we know. Um, also, today, I had the pleasure to join some of the community, or some of the staff here from, and community members, uh, at, as Wild Rose kids came through and learned about city government and learned about how to, uh, vote and register to vote. And, uh, I don't know what they ended up voting on yet, so maybe we can get an update on what they, what they chose. Um, but always great to see that, and it's just special that, uh, we do that here in Monrovia and let our students kind of interact with our staff, and everyone has, learns from each other. Outstanding. Um, as, uh, Councilmember Spicer mentioned, he and I had a chance to join a lot of other fellows from other, our neighboring cities, and thanks to Dr. Fellow for the opportunity to participate in that tour of the Colorado River Aqueduct. It, it's an inspection trip, as we know, um, to really make sure it's still good. Uh, but, uh, it, it was a great opportunity to learn a lot. It was a weekend just filled with, um, chance to start at Hoover Dam, uh, that was built in the 30s. Somehow, they built it in two years. Just if anyone thinks about government building anything in two years, I don't know. But that, the largest dam ever in two years. Uh, maybe some of the, uh, health, health standards could have been improved, of course, for employees, yeah, uh, as we heard. But, um, quite a remarkable feat, and it is something that provides power for more than 1.3 million people. Uh, but it provides a lot of water as well. Metropolitan Water District is a, uh, our main supplier for Southern California. It's more than 19 million people they serve, and they contract with the state water project, as well as the Colorado River, which they built themselves, and they maintain. It's a, a lot of people that were, are actively engaged 24 hours a day, making sure that that is a reliable resource for us. Um, it's quite intense. And of course, in our current climate future, uh, our Colorado River watershed is, is threatened. Uh, there's challenges there. It's about a 25-year drought that we've had, and so, it's, it's a resource we need to take care of, but, uh, it may not always be as reliable as it is right now. And so it's a resource we need to take care of, but it may not always be as reliable as it is right now. So we do need to continue to do what we can locally to conserve water. Here in Monrovia, we get our water from our lovely, amazing groundwater wells, right? But we also rely on a lot of imported water to come in and actually recharge that groundwater. So making sure that those amenities and those organizations are able to ensure that it's still there is as important as making sure we're also conserving our local supplies and making sure we do as much as we can locally. And that, in reality, also gets to what I was going to just talk to you all about for a minute here. I've had the honor, of course, to go and represent us with the Clean Power Alliance and a big background and interest, and it's Earth Month. But I did want to just ask and make sure that I get some support from you all to like to work with our city staff here, just to look at some ways we can look at conserving our own water within the city and also energy uses to just see what we can do to decrease our own costs, because they're going up. And I mean, I think that was one of the main drivers when we were looking at that chart just now. And it was almost like a hundred, a million dollars in the past four years on the light maintenance fee. And I think a lot of that's coming from electricity. So love to get support just to help work a little bit more and then bring that back as some ideas with the staff. I know we have great staff, too, but just to think about that and say some ways we can find to reduce our own costs.
When you say staff, are you referring to going through the city manager?
Absolutely, sir.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
That's it for me. Thank you.
And I'm totally good with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
And yeah, money, right, 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 right. And what opportunities there might be out there, too, to get grants and things like that. Always want to go after that. Right, and in Monrovia, oh my goodness, and now that it's springtime and we're gearing up for summer, there are so many different things. And the concerts are going to start. And I did have an opportunity to go to the farmer's market on Saturday morning earlier. Eh, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. It's gonna, but I think that earlier start time is going to make a difference. Did want to mention that I had the opportunity to go to the Addams Family Musical at Clifton, and that was a partnership with Center Stage and MUSD. And I know that Dylan's son, Gabe, was, what part did Gabe play?
He played Mel. And I tell you, as one who never once performed, like singing a song, my son's first performance, he started singing his solo while he was on his knees in front of his wife for the performance, singing in front of a crowd.
Oh, wow.
Very impressive.
Well, I will say that there was so much energy from those kids in that, it was great. And they were cheering each other on, and it was really, really, a lot of electricity in the room. And I know that the high school is feeling a lot of competition with that Addams Family performance. And they have the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee coming up. It's the 17th this week, April 17, 18, 19, and 20. And it will be at the Louise Taylor Performing Arts Center. I'm just giving it a plug. I couldn't find a real simple link. So if you just Google "Monrovia," just "Monrovia, Putnam County Spelling Bee," it'll take you to where you need to go. But those performances, again, are on April 17, 18, 19, two on the 19th, which is a Saturday. So it's approximately two hours and 15 minutes, oh no, with one, two hours with a 1:15 minute intermission. So at any rate, great opportunity to see our kids perform. But the Addams Family, I was just getting such a kick at those kids cheering each other on. It was, it was great. And then, yes, the Food Ed Spring Cleanup Day at the schools. Great opportunity for kids and parents and supporters to get out there and do a little gardening. I've got enough gardening, I've got a lot of gardening I could do at my own house. And the Wine Walk, yeah, great turnout, great energy in Old Town. And then, Spring Bunny Photos, my daughter came home, she went with her dog. She wanted a picture with the dog. She said after a while, she felt very silly standing in line with her dog. So she decided to, she decided to go home. But at any rate. And then for food, actually, our Monrovia Community Gardens, there is on Saturday, the 19th, the Small Space and Container Gardening Session, and that's from 10 to 11:30. And that's at Magnolia and Colorado, at our community garden. So that's a great opportunity, again, there. And on April 23rd to the 25th, at least four of us, Sergio, Tamela, myself, and Larry are going to the Cal City's Leadership, or Leaders Summit in Sacramento. Have an opportunity to attend some great sessions and get some great information and meet with legislators. And then on, I just wanted to give another plug for the Monrovia Area Partnership Neighborhood Conference. So many people think that's just for, you know, the MAP leaders. It's not for, the MAP puts it on. They do a great job at putting it on at Second Baptist Church there on Shamrock. But it's for everyone, everyone in the community. It's a time to get together and find out how your city works or maybe the problems it might have in some areas, but it's a great event. So please, please come out and support that. Again, that's on Saturday, the 26th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Second Baptist on Shamrock. And then I will be attending then on May, it's just an overnight. It's May 1st overnight and come back the next day. It's the SCAG, their annual conference, and it's mostly the installation and awards that they do every year. They do have some sessions as well. There are no, I couldn't find any, and I don't think you did either, Alice. There were no motions or any type of items that they were bringing forward. So then on, we already mentioned the home tours. Oh, I did want to mention mosquito vector. And I might have mentioned at an earlier meeting, I lose track of who I tell this to. But most people don't think about the problems with the empty pools and rather, not so empty pools in the fire areas. And they will potentially create a huge, huge problem for us because they're nothing but great, big, huge mosquito incubators. And unfortunately, I just found out at a recent meeting, we had thought maybe a real cheap solution, or at least initial solution, would be to use mosquito fish. Unfortunately, the pH in the water of the pools is not right, and it can't sustain the mosquito fish. Now, maybe at some time, that pH will change. But right now, with the ash in the pools, it doesn't, it doesn't support life for the mosquito fish. So, and then the other very unfortunate thing is FEMA, the coverage for the Mosquito and Vector Control District, the hours and the time and effort and materials and whatnot, it's not covered. It's not covered in a disaster response. So we're working on that and also trying to talk to California legislators to see if we can come up with some money to fight it. In recent years, I mean, mosquitoes, if you get into the history of it, mosquitoes are the deadliest animal in the world. They've killed more people than anything else, wars and other animals and things like that. We're now facing, in California, the locally transmitted dengue. Up until just about a couple of years ago, we didn't have any locally transmitted. It was always through travel. Well, in 2023, I think there were two cases, and then last year, there were 16 cases. And so, and now with all these mosquitoes. Fortunately, 80s mosquitoes only fly about 150 to 200 yards. So they're not going to be coming from Pasadena over there, but we go to Pasadena. So at any rate, lots to think about there. And so it's all of our responsibility to tip, toss, and protect. So please, please, please check out your own properties and make sure there's no water. Those little, those little mosquitoes can breed in a capful of water. So it's, it's, it's difficult. And I, this week, actually, April 13th to the 19th, is California Mosquito Awareness Week. And so I know in the past, sometimes someone has come in the A to E's costume. And so at any rate, but just be aware, and it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge this coming mosquito season. So, and...
Madam Mayor, I had somebody come from the Mosquito and Vector Control. Was very friendly, but he says that unfortunately, sometimes members of the public are very much against them coming onto the property and inspecting, including people in Monrovia. But he was very friendly, very nice representative.
They are very nice in that, and in recent years, in terms of pool inspection, they've done a lot through aerial inspection, and then they email people and whatnot. And so that's eliminated a lot of that, you know, sometimes maybe feeling of confrontational inspection or something. But they are really a great group. And if you do have water or a pool or a pond or something that is an issue, those, if it wasn't, doesn't have ash in it, you can, the mosquito fish are a very viable resource to fight the mosquitoes. So you can call them and make arrangements to get some mosquito fish. I think that was just about all I had. I did want to wish everyone a happy Passover and a happy Easter. And so at any rate, with that, I, yes?
Mayor Shavelin. Yeah, I have an item I forgot to mention.
Okay.
On Saturday, I spent the whole day at the community center with Tiffany and Tina. We interviewed, I think it was 38 to 48 kids for the Yes Intern.
Awesome.
And we have a great group of kids coming on board. Great group.
Looking, looking, looking forward to them, having them on board and seeing their projects and all that good stuff. Okay, moving on then to Administrative Reports, AR1. And we have Award of Contract to RG General Engineering, Inc., for the Satoro Tsunishi Park Project. And we have Mr. Tuchiki presenting this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item for you tonight, as you mentioned, is an Award of Contract to RG General Engineering for the Satoro Tsunishi Park. And that's our Project G1000. And then that's also with an approval of a task order with Merrill Johnson for construction management. So by way of background, in 2021, the council approved entitlements to develop about a two-acre site with the Chick-fil-A and Starbucks on Huntington Drive on the west end of town. As part of the development, the property owner dedicated approximately 8,600 square feet of land on the southern portion of that property. That was then dedicated to the city in agreement to develop that as a future community park. Council then subsequently approved an agreement with RHA Landscape Architects and planners for the development of those plans, and so we've been working with them on the completion of that. Last year, council approved the naming of the park as Satoro Tsunishi Park. Mr. Tsunishi was a notable Monrobian, who was the first Asian American to graduate from Monrovia Arcadia Tordi High School. So the scope of work, it's quite a bid to fit in that 8,600-square-foot park. But it is to construct a 1,975-square-foot playground area, 1,300 square feet of turf, and 4,500 square feet of drought-tolerant native landscaping. There's new lighting and perimeter fencing, public art, including four haiku footnote poems, three interpretive signs, Big Belly Solar Compactors, that'll be wrapped with historic photos, two murals, and a little library. There's also included is picnic tables, benches, drinking fountains, and a bike rack. A new monument sign that would be consistent with the rest of the parks here in the city. And then a new six-foot block wall at the park's southern property line to help facilitate space for the public art mural. As council will recall, and this is something that we showed to the Measure K Committee as well, this is the aerial photo of what the park will look like. So as you'll see here, you'll see the playground on the right-hand side. You'll see a number of shade trees that will eventually grow into that park, the walking path associated with it, and then you'll see some parking improvements on that left-hand side there as well. So overall, it's a lot to pack into that 8,600 square feet, but it's certainly going to be quite a park once it's finished. So for the public bid, so we advertised this project in February and March, and we received proposals on March 26. It's actually worth noting that at the mandatory pre-bid meeting, we had over 20 contractors in attendance, which I think during my tenure here is probably the most contractors in attendance at one of these meetings. So it definitely helped us in the bidding process. The engineer's estimate on the project was $978,008. The bid results are here with the apparent low bidder as RG General Engineering at $838,042. And then you'll see there, we got about five more bids, all at varying costs. We did have a second low bidder who is very close, and I can get to that in just a second. Later on, on April 1, and unfortunately, this is not an April Fool's joke, we received a bid protest from the apparent second low bidder, which is Earthscapes Landscape, Inc. The basis of the protest was the apparent low, the basis of the protest was that what they are claiming is that the apparent low bidder is ineligible to perform landscape and irrigation work. And that's based on the interpretation of Earthscapes, interpretation of the California license requirements. So we reviewed that bid protest letter with the city attorney. We compared that against the California license requirements to perform work. We are recommending at this time to reject the protest and then award the contract to the apparent low bidder. Again, it's worth noting that a response letter was mailed and emailed to Earthscapes, and staff has not received a response. And then the original bid protest letter and the responses included in the agenda packet, for your reference. For the fiscal impact on the project, so funding for this was allocated during the Measure K funding plan, about $1.6 million. The total project cost here is shown here. So what's on the agenda for consideration tonight is the contract for RG General. But what you'll see here is that in February, council approved a contract with LSI for the playground installation. So this is a similar strategy that we used for Lucinda Garcia Park, where we did an advanced purchase of the playground equipment through LSI. We then procured a contractor to work with LSI to do the installation. So all in, the total project budget is about $1.4 million, which is, just comes in a little bit less than what council allocated at $1.6 million. So all that to say is that we have enough money for this project based on the allocation that council approved.
Great.
So the recommendation tonight, and it's a wordy one, but it's to approve the plans and specifications for Project G1000, reject the bid protest, award a contract to RG General Engineering for Satoro Tsunishi Park in an amount not to exceed $838,042, approve a contingency amount not to exceed $83,800, and approve Task Order 121 with Merrill Johnson Engineering for construction, management, and inspection in an amount not to exceed $83,655. That would conclude my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Alex? If no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we approve Option 1, approve the plans and specifications for Project G-1000, reject the bid protest, and award a contract to RG Engineering, Inc., for the Satoro Tsunishi Park Project G1000 in an amount not to exceed $838,000, and approve a contingency amount not to exceed $83,800, and approve Task Order 121 with Merrill Johnson Engineering for construction, management, and inspection in an amount not to exceed $83,655.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote? Councilmembers Belden.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mayor Shavelin. Yes. Thank you very much, Alex. Great report.
Thank you, Alex.
We look forward to the park. AR2, Participation in San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments Affordable Housing Incubator Program to Evaluate Options Related to Real Property the City Owns at 222 East Cypress Avenue. And Mr. Feek will present.
Thank you, Mayor Shavelin. This item, I do not have a presentation before you. We've seen quite a few presentation slides related to the property at 222 East Cypress. I will share, however, that the city recently accepted the keys to the building. So the property is now ours. We'll soon begin some basic maintenance work to mow. We call it mow and blow. So to maintain the property, to take care of it. Already introduced myself to the new property owner, the neighbors. And so I think we're really excited to, now, not only we acquired the property, but now begin planning next steps. The item before you this evening, which is included as part of your packet... before you this evening, which is included as part of your packet, I want to give a little bit of backstory because it's, I think, important work happening behind the scenes through regional collaboration that most people aren't aware of. So as a member of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, we've been working very hard over many years to increase affordable housing throughout the region. In two thousand twenty-one, Assembly Bill one forty established the REAP two-point-oh program, which is, which allocated six hundred million dollars in state funding to help administer planning and implementation programs to accelerate infill housing, to address fair housing issues, and also to reduce the number of vehicle miles traveled. The state allocated a significant amount of that funds, five hundred and ten million dollars, to metropolitan planning organizations like SCAG, which then dispersed more locally to councils of government and participating agencies. Our council of governments received one million five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in what's called REAP two-point-oh funds to operate what's called the Affordable Housing Incubator Program. And this, that's ultimately what the discussion tonight is about. The incubator program provides a slate of technical consulting services to all COG member cities to support housing production, particularly affordable housing production. These consulting services can include financial analysis, development acquisition, environmental analysis, architectural and design services, and really any resources that are needed to evaluate housing options in a community. The needs are quite varying across the, the many members of the COG. We thought a wonderful program to consider for this is the two-twenty-two East Cypress project. So as the community knows, city recently purchased the two thousand seven hundred and thirty-six square foot residential structure that sits at two-twenty-two East Cypress. It's a point eight acre lot, so a very large lot. We, council approved the purchase and sale agreement in January twenty, on January twenty-first, and we just recently closed and accepted ownership, as I just mentioned. As we proceed, there's a lot of kind of moving parts with the project, and we want to bring this item to council's attention, the public's attention, so they can begin to understand what really is happening. I've already heard many, many rumors in the community. And so we want to, things like we're moving this property like we are the Anderson House, and a lot of other things in between. So I want to make it very clear that the city is going to be driving the process. Number one priority is we want to preserve the Victorian home. So that is the number one priority. That was the original reason we purchased the property. And so there's an important component to this entire potential project, which is going to be restoration of that important historic resource. Another important component is the council has long expressed its desire to increase affordable housing opportunities in the community. And we think this is a perfect match to do something that not only allows us to, allows us to consider a potential project where we not only preserve a historic structure, but could, but could increase affordable housing. If we were to do that, we have to consider what it would look like, what kind of project it would be, what would it cost, all those other factors, which that's really what this analysis is for. So what we've requested from the COG through participation in this program is the COG, through this incubator program, would assemble the, the different resources needed to evaluate a project. They would do a site assessment that consists of a historic structures report. We want to know everything that we need to do to preserve that structure. That report will guide the restoration efforts. It will guide decision-making at the Historic Preservation Commission, and ultimately guide city council and how we proceed with preserving that home. The project will include an economic analysis to consider financial feasibility of developing additional housing on the remainder of the site. So this would include how many units we would do, what are the sources of funding, what levels of affordability would they be, and what are some of the requirements for some of those funding sources. Staff would return for sort of an early check-in with city council, and, and also public information regarding the project, where you could review conceptual site plans, look at some renderings, some analyses, and provide additional guidance and direction to the city, which could, which will drive further direction on the project. Following that meeting with the city council, staff will continue working with the COG, working with our contract partners through the incubator program, and also the community, and preparing whatever's required to pursue the direction that's given by council. So should there be general plan amendments, or zoning code amendments, or anything related to entitled projects, we'll be able to come back to city council at a later time and consider all those as a project, and also perform any additional analysis or work that's required under SEQA, or municipal code, or any other ordinance or statute. I want to highlight to the community, and just publicly, that any proposed project that we define would require SEQA review, and we would do that at the appropriate time. In accordance with the, the grants guidelines, when this, this property, it's, it meets all their requirements to receive funding. The COG has been very excited about this project. I think it's a pretty unique project, and there's certainly sufficient funding to do it. A couple of the requirements is the SCAG, the original grant, the, the agency that awarded the grant. SCAG knows that they cannot require us to approve a project or adopt a project as a, as a result of receiving the grant funds. But what they're asking us to do is they want the council to consider the project, say yes or no, but to consider the project sometime before the grant deadline of May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. So we're giving ourselves almost a year to complete all of the analysis, which I think is sufficient time. But they know that this, there's no strings attached to this. We won't have to reimburse SCAG. These funds will be used to evaluate the site, and ultimately, we just need to bring those back to the city council for your direction on. There is no cost to the city for participating in this program. We will work directly with the COG. They will foot the bill for all of the analysis. We have used some, a smaller version of the incubator program in the past. We reviewed economic analyses related to seven oh two South Myrtle, the Oak Park Apartments project. Those were very helpful for us in understanding impacts of these projects. So we're really excited to work with COG staff on this. If, at this time, if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Ultimately, the decision tonight, I'm asking for your, what, what I would call acknowledge and accept the proposed scope of work, as I've explained earlier tonight. This would allow me to execute necessary agreement and documents with the COG on forms and agreements approved by the city attorney to proceed. And we're ready to get started as soon as we sign that agreement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Dylan? And I did want, I know you said that in jest, just like moving the Anderson House. Just wanted to make it very clear to everyone, he's saying that in jest, we're not moving the Anderson House, and we're not proposing to move this one. We're not proposing to move this one either. I did want to also, I'm excited to mention also that we might then eventually qualify for some regional housing trust money as, as well. So all good things. So if there are no questions of staff, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to accept the proposed scope of work with San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, affirming the city's participation in the Affordable Housing Incubator Program under the Regional Early Action Planning REAP two-point-oh grant, and authorize the city manager to execute necessary agreement related to participation in the program on forms and agreements approved by the city manager.
I'll second.
City attorney, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmembers Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Shablon.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to AR three, amendment to Title Eight Health and Safety Chapter eight point zero four, the health code and of the Monrovia Municipal Code to update the city's health code, introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five-oh-five. And we have Mr. Steele on this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this is a very short cleanup item. This might be the shortest staff report I've ever written in my career. We noted, after the council approved the updated agreement with the County Department of Public Health to provide, continue to provide health-related services to the city, that agreement refers to a specific version of the LA County Code being in our code as the, the city's health code. And we noticed that that version that's currently in the code is, is an outdated version. So the only thing this ordinance would do is just change the reference to the current version of the LA County Health Code. And then also, just to provide for, not have this issue in the future, we added language that said, we'll continue to adopt the amended version going forward. So that won't take any additional action by the city council. So all this does is just change the date from, of the version from a two thousand and eleven version to the current twenty-two-four county code, Title, Title Eight, which is licensing, and Title Eleven, which covers all their inspection requirements. So with that, we recommend that the council introduce, read by title only the, this ordinance, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Steele? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to introduce, waive further reading and read by title only ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-oh-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll just say then, without objection.
And we need to actually have a.
You want to, do we have to have a roll call?
We have to show three votes.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Beldon.
I'm sorry.
Even make it even shorter.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Shablon.
Yes. I, I figured you'd stop me if we needed something specific.
Thank you. That's ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-oh-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Monrovia, California, amending Chapter eight point zero four of Title Eight of the Monrovia Municipal Code, and adopting by reference amended Division One of Title Eight and Title Eleven of the County of Los Angeles Code as the health code for the city of Monrovia.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our last agenda item here, AR four, possible adoption of local campaign finance limits within the existing state law regulatory structure. Ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-oh-four. And Mr. Steele, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council knows, you've had several discussions about the possibility of creating a local campaign contribution limit here in Monrovia. The current state law limit, if, if a city doesn't opt out or adopt its own limit is fifty-nine hundred dollars per contributor. So the council's had a number of discussions on this subject. At the last council discussion, we brought forward some analysis that we had done regarding the levels of contributions in previous city council elections, going back over the last five cycles, found the contributions above a thousand dollars were really the outliers. Contributions kind of between two fifty and that thousand dollar level were really more the norm. And there were only four of you present for that discussion. There was kind of some discussion about a limited five hundred dollars or a limited a thousand dollars, and you all decided to bring it back. At the time, you had a full council for discussion. So we have presented an ordinance that has an option of either choosing a five hundred dollar limit or a thousand dollar limit, and we can make that change once you all decide which, which of those two or another that you want to use. And, and then this ordinance has a couple of other provisions to make sure that people don't try to evade the limits by using one or more loopholes. And, and these are kind of consistent with what state law does as well. So we have a prohibition against essentially laundering contributions by either reimbursing or promising to reimburse people for making a contribution, that would be making a contribution in somebody else's name. We have a prohibition on reimbursing people for making contributions. So a business owner, for example, can't tell their employees to make a contribution and then pay them back af, after the fact. Those kinds of extra enforcement mechanisms are in here. I would point out that consistent with Supreme Court precedent, this ordinance would not apply to the contribution, the personal contributions of the candidate's own money to his or her own campaign. That's, that's set forth in United States Supreme Court precedent. We can't regulate a candidate's expenditure of, I'm sorry, contribution of their own money. So that exception is in here. And otherwise, we typically follow the state law definitions for things like contributions and contributors and the reporting requirements, except that we define candidate in this ordinance to mean a person who is a candidate for any elective office of the city of Monrovia, or the holder of any elective office in the city of Monrovia. And that's obviously to make it clear that this would apply to mayor, council member, city clerk, city treasurer elections. But it would not apply to somebody from the city who was running for a different office. So if, if a member of the city council was running for the Community College Board of Trustees, or the state legislature, or something, this lim, this limit would not apply to that candidate. It only applies to the campaign for city elective office. So I think that meets what the council asked for, with the exception of just making a decision between five hundred or a thousand or some other number. And that ordinance is before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Craig? I did have a question. And on the disclosure amount, what was, they increased it, and I can't remember now what it was. Is it five hundred?
The disclosure amount, well, if you're talking about disclosure on a campaign report.
Yes.
Or are you talking about?
No, no, no.
Disclosure and refusal?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, they, they increased it from two fifty to five hundred.
Yes. Okay, and any?
And that would remain in effect, no matter whether you.
Correct, correct. Whether we, whatever we say, that stays in place.
Yes.
I don't know if he's going to say anything. I'll, I'll just throw, throw some in there. I, I like the five hundred dollar number.
I'd like a thousand. I like the thousand.
Because the limit right now was five, I mean, the, the, is five thousand nine hundred, right?
Yes.
Any other?
I think I'd be comfortable with either five hundred or a thousand, but I mean, I think it seems reasonable even a thousand. It's kind of a top end, probably, the most, basically, right?
Right, right.
Larry, what do you think?
Yeah, the thousand is good.
Okay, well, I think the, you're looking then for a motion on this, correct, sir?
That's correct. We, as I, as I count noses, we would introduce it with the thousand dollar.
Thousand dollars, mm-hmm. And I have no, it was five hundred or a thousand. I mean, I didn't have, I have a huge issue with either. So then, do we have a motion then to accept our ordinance then inserting the amount of one thousand dollars? Is that sufficient information?
Yes.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmembers Beldon.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Shablon.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you.
Oh, sorry. That's ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-oh-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Monrovia, California, amending Chapter two-point-two-oh of Title Two of the Monrovia Municipal Code relating to limits on contributions to candidates for city elective office.
Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our administrative reports. We do not have any further public input. Our next scheduled meeting is on May Tuesday, May sixth, here in the city council chambers at seven-thirty PM. And our adjournment this evening is going to be in memory of United States Army Sergeant Edwin F. Franco, Monrovia High School alumni of class of twenty eighteen. He was killed in a training, I believe it was a training exercise. At any rate, we keep his family in our hearts and prayers. And there, let me see, what time is it?
Nine sixteen.
Nine sixteen. This meeting is adjourned at nine sixteen. And again, happy Passover, happy Easter. Come out and, and enjoy all the great events in Monrovia. Let me just.